All right. All right. Hi, everyone. I am Joanne Benford. We've got Mike Bolak with To The Point Podcast joining us as co-hosts and we've got Kevin McDonald on the screen right now. Welcome to Benford Chronicles. How are you guys doing?
Doing great. Glad to be here.
Yeah, I'm really glad to have you on. We're waiting for Jennifer Pippin. Her daughter is wrestling and we're waiting for her to come on board. Now, it's my pleasure to have you both here and have, and we're waiting for Jennifer. So tonight I have some questions that I wanted to talk about. Kevin, you're previously the school board member that held the District 5C and you brought with you experience in classical education. The wonderful thing is that it's being implemented at the school district. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Well, I have to augment that with a we hope because as my term was ending, we started getting suspicious as to whether the school district was actually going to utilize a classical curriculum or whether they're backing away from that and going to use a Florida-approved curriculum and really focus on a K through eight model without classical. I mean, they didn't seem to want to put the name classical on the school and it seems like there's some issues as to what they're going to do with the curriculum. So I'm now concerned that there may be a bill of goods involved and they may not deliver on the product.
Yeah, I was watching the meeting Mondays. It was Monday's meeting and I know Melissa brought it up and so did Jennifer Pippin and Jackie Rosario brought it up to make sure that the school gets a name and it's called classical school and also the curriculum's not watered down. So what do you, what do you, what kind of insights do you have that would make this a pure success?
Well, I think if they grabbed a good reliable classical curriculum and I can't see you can go anything better than with, what is it? Not Heritage.
Learning Alliance.
No, 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 the opposite of that. But the college in Michigan, non-ticky Heritage, it's not Heritage, but the, this college in Michigan, a name slipping my mind for the moment, they give away free classical curriculums and they start, they've started, started and helped start dozens of classical schools around the country and they'll provide the curriculum, they'll provide training, they'll provide ongoing support at no cost. They're really behind the idea of classical curriculums. They're usually for Christian and other private, often non-sected organizations, but they have a secular version and that's what the county would have to use or would use. So that'd be a great place to look and so far it doesn't seem to be that's what they're looking to implement. Hillsdale, sorry.
Hillsdale College. Oh, I love Hillsdale College.
Yeah, they have a great program. It's free, but why would you go with the best?
Yeah, I mean, I love Hills. I mean, they have all kinds of curriculum just to keep you up to date on constitutionality of America and different topics, you know? So that's great. You know, you were a great school board member. Do you think you're going to follow along and see how the school's doing and maybe comment on us and let us know what you think is, should be helping to improve things that they might not be doing or something to the school district?
I imagine that my voice will be heard again. In fact, actually, I had intended to go to the last week's meeting, but I got sick over the weekend running a temperature, so I couldn't go, but, but I would intend to go and offer some insights where it can help. I'm sad to see that the, my replacement in District 5C who campaigned on, you know, putting the kids first and ending the politicization and ending the culture wars, and since he was elected in August, did nothing for the kids. Nothing for the kids, but the first thing he's done is continue to drive is a very particularly political action to continue and to refire the culture wars. And so he's, instead of being what he claimed to be, he's been just a, another political hack. He's returning, he's doing his favors for the NAACP who was a big political supporter for him and for Peggy. And so he's doing the political paybacks and he's, he's going down that road instead of doing what he said he was going to do. And that's disappointing. And these are fights he didn't have to start. There are things that had been settled.
Well, it is. And I was wondering, I started thinking about it because I was watching the workshop where he brought up his number one subject and that was pretty much to shorten Rosario's term with the IRC NAACP work group. And I was like, okay, so McDonald was the voting member in that and he had no vote. He's claiming that you guys took a vote away from him. And it's interesting because it looks like many people, you know, like the, like the only minority on the school board that's actually currently on the IRC NAACP work group has, has been discriminated against. I think he's discriminating against her politically and ideology. He doesn't like her ideas. He doesn't like her as a person and he's discriminating against her, but she's a perfect person to have on that board because she is a minority.
Right. And well, we're talking common sense and straightforward goals and objectives. So that makes sense from that perspective. But when you get into Bizarro world where everything is the opposite, that's where we live. So the objective for most people is not for this work group committee to solve anything. They don't want the 60-plus-year-old desegregation order to come to an end. They don't want the district to be proclaimed as being in unitary status. They don't want that because there's no benefit.
They need victims.
They need to be victims.
Right.
And there's no benefit if that gets resolved because that's their, that's their power, that's their influence, that's their, their notoriety. And so if that goes away, they got nothing. That's why Peggy, I mean, that's why I speculate why Peggy wrote that 2130 addendum so that, and the addendum was, the policy was that if we ever solve this, if we ever got to the point that says, yes, there are no racial, racial problems in Indian River County, that the school district is treating everyone the same and there's not a, unity means basically there's not a separate ostensibly white and black school district where people are being taught and handled differently. We're being handled in one unitary basis. That's what the unitary status really means. And they don't want to end that because, you know, their power is there. But if that ends, policy 2130 kicked in and said, once we're, we've solved everything, there needs to be an ongoing new committee, which they had called a work group. Work group is not even in Sunshine, but at least as a committee it would be in Sunshine, but they wanted this new group to continue on heavily populated by NAACP members. And so the NAACP still has their hand in controlling what the school districts is. And they're a political organization and they've proven to be a political organization. I understand they're wanting to. I understand with their power and their leverage, they're able to make these things happen, but is it right that that's what we should be doing? I would say, no, it isn't. It should be, if we solve the issue, the whole point that says that we, that this is, case is closed, is that we shouldn't keep the case open. So the 2130, 2130 policy that I spearheaded to be removed has been replaced with 2750 policy, which was written by Dr. Moore and his staff just before I left. And it's a more sensible, reasonable approach to the underlying concern, which is to make sure that there does not crop up in the future any racially based or minority-based or other issues that put one group of students below another or don't treat them the same way, which nobody wants to have. But to have a process in place to prevent that, it is a good thing. But this process does give NCAA a voice where they, they will be speaking with the superintendent, but it doesn't give them direct input into how the schools are run, which I think is.
I was listening to Anthony Brown with the NAACP on the school board meeting and something just caught me, what he said, you know, they want everybody to be the same in the school, right? To have unitary status. But what he said here in his closing statement, as we would say, what's best for children, especially what's best for African-American children. Right there, he's calling for separation. He's not asking us to look at them as children. He's asking us to look at them by the color of their skin. African-American children.
And that is just one sliver of what the whole country has been striving to do. We've achieved a situation where racism is pretty much not an issue in our country. But like anything, if you cure cancer, what is the American Cancer Society going to do? They don't really want it cured because they don't, they're out of a job. And if you cure racism, you know, what are these racially-based organizations going to do? Where does their power and their, their objective and their means go to? So they have gone from having fairness, which everyone agreed to, to having a truly institutional racial bias against the major part of the population and to not just say that we're going to treat them differently, but they have to intimidate them and they have to bully them and they have to tell them that you were born bad. You've gotten what they're calling white privilege and that's bad for some reason. And that you should feel bad about being yourself and so therefore you should kneel. We're not even going to, we're not going to force you. We're just going to intimidate you to kneel before us. And that's really the way they want to run. They want, it's the same as, if you remember the George Orwell's Animal Farm, all the animals are equal, but some are more equal than others. That's the same sentence that he used.
Now with that contract that they're talking about that gives Jackie Rosario a timeframe to be on this work group, weren't, wasn't there wording that said they were going to meet once a month? But they haven't met all those times. So she hasn't really served time to see what's going on with the group or to participate in the group or to observe the group, whatever it is that she actually does when she's there.
Right. And that's one of the points that Jackie made. From April, when she was appointed, because Peggy had been on, been on that role since it started two years earlier. And obviously the group has really not accomplished anything under her, under her influence. So I said, well, it's a good, why not try Jackie Rosario? Because we want to get somewhere. So they just refused to meet. Now they are, the court stipulated that they're supposed to meet every week, every month. So against court orders, they have not been meeting. Now, in fact, prior to that time, they missed a lot of their meetings. They met very irregularly anyway. So they basically are ignoring the court order that says we have to meet every month. Brown actually, I guess at a recent, at a spring meeting, he said, stop throwing that court order in my face. I don't care what the court says.
Yeah, where's the accountability in that though? Is there any accountability? Like what's the course of action for not following court orders?
Ultimately, the course of action is because the way the court said that it is, you know, court, a judge doesn't want to be in the middle of a messy political thing that says this judge ruled against NAACP, you know, they don't want, that's the last thing they want. So they just said, you've got a work group, you guys figure it out, you know, come back and see. So most of it is in our laps. But I think the expectation is that as this continues to get nowhere, evidence builds up that they really are not doing any of their parts to make this come to conclusion and to go back to the courts and say, look, you know, we've achieved unitary status. They really don't want to cooperate and we want the courts to just declare that.
Yeah. So where does it derive from though? Is this by statute that this has to happen? Is it by an executive order once put in place?
It was a court order. The whole, the desegregation order, which is now, it was over, I thought it was 60, maybe 65 years.
It's like 50, it's 55 years old. This case is coming from 55 years ago.
So it, and apparently there was substantial reason for it at the time. It lasted for 20 or 30 years and went dormant. Everyone just forgot about it. The problem went away and so they just let it go. The judge that was involved with it died. So then, at the end of the 90s, I believe, NAACP decided to revive this and, you know, make a new issue from it. And so they went back to court, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, in 2018, that the court said, well, we're going to, we're going to put you into this work group that you work together, you compromise, here's the, here the specifications, the school district has to, has to show that they're making progress and the NAACP must acknowledge, you know, what the parameters and measures should be. How are we going to measure whether they made progress? Well, apparently, I don't have many of the details because I'm not part of this, this committee and their information is sort of vaguely available, but from what I understand, the NAACP doesn't really want to commit to those decisions and the school district has provided them data in a number of ways. And when they provide the data, they say, well, that's not enough data. And they provide them with more data. And they say, well, that's not in the format that we want to do. And they provided something else. There's always a reason why they just don't want to take the information and process it and acknowledge it. So it's very, it becomes very clear that the issue is not the data issue, is not anything other than they don't want to see the ball move forward. It's getting too close to the goal line and when it crosses the goal line, they don't win.
And is there any type of like court-ordered mediator involved or is this just relying on school board and NAACP to report to the court?
Mostly relying on that, but if they hit an impasse and it requires two consecutive meetings, I believe, of not being able to make progress, then they can go back to the, to the court and ask to bring in a mediator and then they will discuss the mediator and try and come to some conclusion from that. And the mediator will say, you know, they've talked, they're still not agreeing. I can't help them agree. I can't make them agree. And so they're still in a stalemate.
Which makes, well, that makes perfect sense why they're not meeting like they're supposed to.
Why would they want to meet? In fact, if, if, I mean.
If that could mean they could end up with a mediator.
Jackie Rosario is not a fool around person. She would get in there and she would just, as she did, I guess they had two Zoom call meetings in October finally, and she asked questions and she challenged things. And, you know, the status quo was not what she was going to go along with. Well, they of course hated that.
Of course.
Yeah, they didn't want that. So they knew that's what Jackie would be liking. They didn't want someone. Now, who's the contrary? The contrary was Peggy, who, she would probably get up in the morning and make him breakfast. Peggy is about two things from my perspective. Teachers Union and NAACP. She's, she seems to be a political animal driven by those two factors.
And she comes off, she's very nice.
Well, she's, and she's a nice person. I mean.
She's a sweet lady. Like when I meet her and talk with her, I'm like, man, she is so sweet and so nice, but she's just not focusing on what needs to be focused on.
Well, she just has a different agenda and a different set of principles. I guess a different worldview, which blinds her to some things and makes others really important. NAACP is really important to her. Is it because they're a voting block for her? Maybe, or is it, are they a voting block for her because she's such a big supporter of them? It goes both ways, you know, but basically they're tied very closely together. And, you know, same with the teachers' union. She grew up through the whole teaching ranks, so she loves them. And, you know, it's, it's not political. It's, it's like, it's inbred. So those are the two things that are really inbred with her that, that hold very high regard in her world. So of course, you know, so if they don't want to end the thing, you think that someone in her position is going to want to, you know, push things along and make it happen? No more than the judge wants to do that. In fact, less than the judge, because the judge will not face the consequences that she would face if the NCAA doesn't get what they want.
I agree. Do you think, you know, there's a lot of talk from us on the mainland, you know, throwing shade at, you know, the beachside districts, you know, Brian Barefoot just seemed to be a plant and his predecessor just seems to be another plant. But is that kind of, like, is there some truth to that? Like, are these guys just put up? Because I don't believe they're giving us their best. I kind of feel like these guys owe their class of friends a debt and that's why they're serving. Because why else would somebody sacrifice their lifestyle for, what is it, $45,000 salary?
Forty, more than that, yeah. Yeah, I think, well, you look at, well, Barefoot apparently didn't need the money. Dyer definitely doesn't need the money. He's not taking the salary. You know, I've been on lots of different committees and things, church and presbyteries in Manhattan and various things that I've been involved with. And I always said, be very suspicious of the person who fights hard to get a job that pays nothing.
Right.
Because there's something in it for them and you just can't tell what it is.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. I think there's that thin line of suspicion, like, yeah, that's a good person or something's really fishy about that.
Best. Suspect everybody is my.
Especially with no meat in the game. Like I don't knock you for not having children in the district or anybody for not having children in the district they want to serve. But, I mean, when your kids are, you know, they didn't struggle at all. None of them ever seen a public school. Their grandkids won't see a public school. It just seems like they're doing the business of the island's interest, you know?
Right. Like, how are they in touch with the families that send their kids to school there?
Well, that's not the real issue. It's, do they actually care about the families who are sending their children there?
Well, it's obvious they don't because Dyer's first issue was to take Rosario and shorten her term from being on that group, work group. That was his number one priority. And then he felt entitled to a vote. And I'm like, how can you feel entitled to a vote just because you were elected? The transition didn't happen yet where he took his, he was sworn in and took charge of the position. It didn't happen yet.
Right. I have to understand, have to ask, who was advising him? Because I know that his campaign manager, you know, that's so off, off the ranch. I would not suspect that he would have advised that.
I'm very curious at who coordinated this and if it broke the sunshine laws because when he was trying to describe how he was going, he wanted to rescind it and then amend it. He really didn't know what he was doing. It was like he was moving forward with a process that he had no familiarity with, didn't even, he probably didn't even know that process existed until somebody told him.
There's no way he would, he had, he had never been to a school district meeting until November 19th. When they, the day he installed him was the first time he'd been there for a school board meeting. So I went for a year beforehand just to see what's going on and understand a little bit, at least be, be part of the process. So if I, and I could have done a lot more, but if you invest no time and no effort and knowing what's going on, you obviously, once you're lucky, you know, the expectation is that you're still not going to invest any time. And unfortunately, you know, initial results seem to hold the debts true. Sadly, I mean, and I want, if, I mean, he's several years old, but he, why would you, if you had that, if you were that financially successful and you're that far along in life, why would you want to encumber your last years of life, investing the time that this job should require? You should be going to different schools, you should be meeting with different people, you should be attending events and things that takes a lot of time. It was, I expected it was going to take 15 or 20 hours a week. So I told people, the day after the election, if I won, I'd be happy. If I lost, I'd be a little happier. To do the job right was going to be a big investment. He, there's no way he's going to invest that effort because one, he's not interested in those things, which is fine, but two, he doesn't have, you know, he doesn't have the investment. The only, the only connection with him and the school board is the, the island politics and the second piece is the Learning Alliance, where he was a vice chair of the Learning Alliance and they've got a connection with the schools. And the only thing that makes sense is he feels that by being involved with the schools, he can empower them more. So now the teachers' union have several representatives on the board. The NAACP has a couple of representatives on the board, maybe now two or three representatives on the board. And now the Learning Alliance has a representative on the board. So a lot of people are represented, but, you know, the parents are still underrepresented.
Yeah, that's what, and that's what worries me. In the last hour, we talked about conservative politics and, uh, in red state, like fake rhinos and stuff like that. So like if Dyer and Barefoot were doing the, the bidding for Johns Island, they're not very conservative when they're going after the most conservative member on the board. You know, the backed by the most conservative governor in the country, you know, probably would get the support of the, our constitutional elected president. You know, it just doesn't seem very conservative.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any implication that either of them would be conservative.
Right now. So, and that's what worries me. So then if it's not conservative, doing the bidding of the conservatives on the island, and it is more in line with interest of the Learning Alliance, it just goes to prove to me, a normal citizen, that this is a sham. It's a money laundering scheme. Why else would you have any interest in, in representing that special interest group or that NGO on the school board?
Well, I wouldn't go quite as far as money laundering, but there's definitely money involved. It's, it's cash flow, it's enhancing that, the Learning Alliance as an organization, making them stronger and more involved. That seems to be the point of his, his point of interest is that organization more so than the parents. And, you know, so, and there's no, there's no reason to believe, there's no implication that he was or would be conservative. You might hope that, but he didn't claim to be that. Obviously linking up with Peggy Jones sort of secured that.
Right. Yeah. I mean, the whole, it just, it makes me feel uneasy. The whole, the Brian Barefoot, just the whole way, the whole way the election came down, like you said, this guy didn't even go to any meetings prior to starting his career at the school board. And then some of his first objectives were to drive a wedge between parents and the board with moving the meeting time, adjusting when public comment was going to be. It, like you said, it doesn't seem like he is there for the kids that have to attend the school district.
Right. I had forgotten about the meeting time thing, which is, I mean, the whole, his whole first work group, workshop meeting was embarrassing. He came in here, came in there thinking that he was the CEO of a big corporation and you're going to basically do what I'm going to, and I don't care about rules. Now, I make the rules, you're going to live by my rules. And he ran into what I affectionately call is the wood chipper.
I think he felt it.
Yeah. And it sounded like that too, because he turned and he turned to the attorney and asked her and would not, and kept interrupting her as she's trying to tell him what the legal process is.
I quietly feel inside that Peggy and. I quietly feel inside that Peggy and Terry were kind of chuckling. Underneath like, I'm glad he said it out loud. But at the same time, watching the piranhas, you know, and seeing all the emails come in, they were probably like. You know, because they, I mean, they don't want to hear it. They would love to be able to make those kinds of changes.
Yeah, they don't, they don't want to uh. They don't want to be involved in direct confrontation.
Right. Have somebody else, a useful idiot on the board say it.
He remember, he would, he was doing Peggy's bit um.
Bidding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So why didn't, if it's important to Peggy, why didn't Peggy? Initiate that? And it's not like she didn't think of it. She could have said, you know, first meeting, I'm going to initiate. Putting me back on the board. And maybe she thought it would be too self-serving. The good news is that. Dyer apparently much early on decided he was going to take up that cross. But you know, when I got on the board, there are things that. There are a lot of good things you can do. Why take, why do you pick a fight on an issue that you don't own? That's be a pretty big issue. Now, the issue of how long Jack Rosario is on in that position, if it's. Three more months or eighteen more months. That's an issue that he doesn't need to be involved with unless he's really trying to do a political payback. To uh NCAA, who was real big, uh. Uh, NAACP rather, who's real strong supporters of him. So it was it was somebody there. Uh, at some point, including India, this would be good for uh the people who are his big supporters.
Well, look, Mr. Brown, this is Mr. Brown's legacy. He's he's been doing this since he was uh, he remembers way back when he was fourteen years old when this. And he wants to live through this legacy. It doesn't matter how unified the school district is. He wants to die with the legacy. That he won his case. And that's really how I, that's the impression I got when I listened to him on Monday. Uh, speaking at the board meeting. I'm like, this guy has PTSD from the racism he experienced at fourteen. He's never going to let it go. It doesn't matter unified you are, it's never going to be unified.
And and that's the country's problem. The country's problem is. The way in which we interacted with each other, with particularly people of black race. Is nothing close to what we think is appropriate at this point in time. I mean, when I was born, I was raised that was inappropriate. So we're talking. Better part of the decade of the century. But at one time, you know, they were treated poorly and changing of that was significant. Changing it here in Indian River County was significant. But the problem with every organization is once they start becoming effective. They want to grow and get stronger and bigger. And. If they're effective, they tend to solve whatever they were started for. And then they're stuck. What do I do? When cancer is is eradicated and I got a big organization that fights cancer?
Well, they're probably running scared right now. But before I finish that, let's bring uh John Carapi up from TGI Now. Bring him on up.
Throw him on.
I'm going to add him to the stage. There we go. There we go. Hi. Yep, I can hear you fine. Come on, ju- jump on in, John.
Hi, John.
Well, I was, I was chatting, I was throwing some chats in there. I don't know if you guys seen it or not.
Yeah, we saw.
I did. I was just about to get to him. You have some comments on the whole situation. I know. You want to share with us, John?
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, the biggest thing with what I what I've seen so far is like, like Kevin said, it's 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 tech, it's tech. Corporate bullying tactics is what it is. It's it's he just, he just wants to step in and bully people and to submission to do his will. And so that doesn't resonate anymore with people. So people are going to read through that and see that. And so. Bob Pot Gene is going to keep him in check, which is, which is a beautiful thing. Thank goodness. And you know, Kevin, you were on, you sat there on the dais for for. For a while there and you 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 see what's going on. So thank goodness that Gene is still there, but everything's going to get voted down three to two, no matter what, just like the last meeting I listened to earlier today, you know, it's. It's it's going to fall that way. But 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 Kevin's right on the money. And as far as the Learning Alliance, I mean, I was a nonprofit for a long time. And I mean, the Learning Alliance is not cutting it. I mean. They're not, they're not making progress like 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 people think they are. They're just, they're just patting each other on the back, trying to help the minorities. Trying to do, you know, think they're doing the right thing. And it's not, it's not working, you know, their tactics don't work anymore.
Well, you're absolutely right, John, because the Learning Alliance's goal is to have the kids at ninety percent. Reading and continuing on because third grade, they push that a kid at third grade at ninety percent is going to have a successful future. Well, they've been in the county for over ten years and third graders are sixty three percent. I heard somebody at the school board meeting saying when they're in seventh grade, they've lost their gains. And I'm like, whoa, 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 whoa. They haven't made any gains at all if they started. At sixty three percent because life just gets harder, curriculum just gets harder. So if you're at sixty three percent. It makes sense why you're at sixty percent in the seventh grade. So we don't need, you know, some people are wondering how much more taxpayer money do we spend? To finally say it's time to fire this organization and have them actively fundraise their own funds to help the school district? Because they're seeking our taxpayer money for no results.
Hundred percent. Yeah, okay, Kevin.
As I say, the good news is that if it is good news, the school district now does have their own. Uh, private foundation that they can raise funds for. Makes them more. Independently and controlled those funds and how they're being used. So that that's. Still, how are you going to use the money is the question. But I I think Dr. Moore is pretty good at that using funds appropriately.
So our, so our next move should be done to get rid of the Learning Alliance on our CSAC. So they stop using our taxpayer money so that they can successfully fail. While they're earning a living.
Well, that's really, that's a county issue. And yes, the county should be.
That's what we should move to that.
That was a big, big theme over the last election.
How does that play out in county of politics? Uh, we have how many commissioners and how do they fall in line with that?
We have five commissioners and all the commissioners on the board right now support the Learning Alliance. They love the Learning Alliance. I'm like, you know what? They have not made any gains. Let's keep loving them, but let them earn their money. You know what I'm saying? Stop taking our taxpayer money to show us how you can keep us at a failing mark for another ten years.
Well, and it's even bigger than. Fail or succeed, the county shouldn't be laundering taxpayer money.
No, it's unconstitutional to use our money.
If the Learning Alliance is.
In that sense.
People gave what nineteen million dollars last year to Learning Alliance. Why should the county give five hundred thousand? You know, let people give nineteen point five. Let the county use their money for what the county has the, it's like, it's it's just same as school districts. School district is a taxing authority. The school district decided to start giving money. To NGOs. That would be completely inappropriate, and it is completely inappropriate.
Sorry for that. I don't know what I just did.
It is inappropriate because fundamentally. It is inappropriate because nonprofits, when they want money, they want donations. It's constitutionally fair and constitutionally correct for people to decide if they want to contribute or not. When we have this special taxing district or this, they're taking our general taxing funds that we could use for hurricane, for fixing up like when the tornadoes came through. If we needed to use some of our county tax dollars. That comes from that general discretionary fund. And that's the fund they use to support all of these NGOs. And it's like, look. If I think an NGO is doing a good job, I'm going to give them my money. But don't take more taxes out of me when I'm not even. I don't even agree with this NGO. And that we do have. NGOs in like Care Net, they're nonprofit, and they raise so much money that it, they got. People that bought their building that they're in now. That is, that's when your NGO is doing their job, when they're. Being successful. But here we have unsuccessful NGO, and there's several of them on that CSAC committee that's taking our tax dollars. But uh, the Learning Alliance just needs to go away from the school. Uh, and from their money, getting money from us and do it on their own. And I bet you if they weren't getting our money and the school districts said, hey. You're not raising our schools, it would be easier for them to separate because somehow I think when they're attached to them, there's there's. Stuff going on in the background where somebody's benefiting from it. Why would you keep a failing organization part of your school?
Because it's money, yeah, money, politics and relationships.
Exactly. It's a feel, it's a feel good for for the for the for the beach side. It's a feel good for the purple people, the purple people. It's a feel good. Collaboration because they makes them feel like they're they're doing something good for the community and they're and they're really not. They're just throwing money. At the same thing over and over and over. It's all they've ever done. As long as I've been in this town, as long as I've been involved in nonprofits. The 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 Learning Alliance has always just been throwing money at the same problem. And that's it. That's all it is. They just.
And they ask for more money.
They just keep paying. They just keep making donations and they just keep doing it. It'll never end until we tell, until we decide to say, no, we're not doing this anymore. But. Good luck with that, you know?
Well, first step would be for the county not to give money to NGOs.
Yes, yes.
And the reason the county keeps giving money to the NGOs is because they have the support of the school district. So the school district. Does all these accolades and we love them and blah, 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 blah. So then the county goes, oh, yeah, this school, it's done so well. We just want to do what's. And that's, that's the cycle of life for this NGO. It's if the school district would finally. If we took the the taxpayer money away, then the school district would not be so tied in with them.
And now we have the twenty twenty five Superintendent of the World.
The Super Super.
Yeah, running our district. So how much more money are they going to get?
Yeah.
I mean, you, this guy literally makes what, like seventy five grand less than the president's salary, the president of the United States?
Yeah, I don't remember his figures, but it's like two hundred and something thousand dollars for the cost of living.
If you add in all of the per diem, I, because I gotten with Jen on this, I think it's closer to three hundred and seventy five.
And how much are our teachers making?
Forty something?
Yeah, fifty grand.
Probably starting now. I mean, and the teachers are not, compared to Florida, we're not in bad shape with the teachers. But the point is, yeah, that's. There's a large pay gap for for liberals who are against big pay gaps. You got a large pay gap.
It's a huge pay gap.
Not to mention, you know, when Bass was there and and all those people that are in his cabinet, they're all making over a hundred G's a year too. So I mean. Play that on top of it, you're looking like a million, over a million dollars in just in just four or five different positions. I mean, it's. Doesn't make any sense, a hundred percent. I mean, people got to make a living, but.
Now, on the, on the defense of that, I mean. The school district is just about the largest organization in the county. They're the largest employer.
Yeah.
It's just about the largest in terms of revenue. They're. But most definitely the largest in terms of if you wrap in the the children, the families. And I suppose a grocery store might consider all their customers a larger reach, but uh, I mean, they're, they're a big organization.
Yes.
To to handle that big organization, you know, someone who is capable in doing the job. In most, in most parts, well, there's some issues I think we'd we'd raise, but someone who's doing that job well. Paying that person rather than than getting somebody for fifty thousand, eighty thousand dollars yet less, who's going to squander our forty million dollars. Or four hundred million dollars. It's, it's, you know, I I think the pay is the right thing to do. You got to hold that person accountable to that. And we should try and cut that four hundred. Million dollar number down in general. We're we're losing a number of students that we've got. And you know, I'm afraid that if they, if they pull the plug on the, on their commitment to the to uh. The classical education model. People like me are going to get up to that microphone and 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 tell the parents to flee, run for the exits.
Yeah, they already, they already lost like three hundred students to homeschooling. Yeah.
If that has to happen, that's what has to happen. That's it. You know, that's when we say no, no more. Like, people like you will come to the meeting and say, whoa, what are we doing here? Like, no more. You know, we have to do that. That's the only way we'll put a stop to it.
Yeah, I just don't see how you lose. Your product, your students. And increase your salary.
Yeah.
Right.
It just doesn't. And then you, you know, with all your car allowance, your memberships and. All your perks that come with it. I mean, that's a sweet gig, you know? I wonder if he'd be making that down in Miami.
And all the obvious arguments that have been over these years of his service. It's like, I was blown away. I was like, are you kidding? Really? You know, we were fighting DEI, we were fighting the restrooms, Title Nine, all these fights that we were fighting, the books, you know, all of that stuff.
Well, yeah, the culture, the culture issues, I I think, I mean, I think that his personal. Um, leaning is more in line with those. I don't think he really wants to be in those battles. But I think if uh, you know, if you ask him personally on the side, that may be his his leaning. But his real problem is he's employed by a majority of people that are very far left. Uh, and in favor of those. So he's not, he doesn't have a personal vendetta against them, and he's not going to fight them. So you know, he he's going to sit back and and plus he comes out of the whole education industry, which is already. Uh, very warped in their their, in in most things that they think and believe and do. So.
Yeah.
He he's, you know, it's the, it's the the best house in a bad block.
That's a good way to put it. The best house in a bad block.
But so it's good to have a good person there, but we still have to, one, we have to keep the pressure on. But two, you know, the the real problem is. It it's the citizens, the electorate, electorate. You you got a chance, you know, one of the main reasons I will, I ran is they said. People said, you know, people have to have an alternate or they have to have somebody good that they can choose from.
Yeah.
But Republicans don't show up in the middle of summer. Shame on them.
Not to interrupt you, but a quick update on Jen. Um, her niece got second place overall.
Oh, great. All right.
I don't think she's going to make it with us tonight, but we'll definitely reschedule and get her on again.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I saw she wasn't on. I figured I'd jump in, so.
Yeah, uh, her niece is in weightlifting for Vero Beach High and um. She said she's a freshman and she's destroying the seniors.
I saw her picture. That's a picture of a freshman.
Yes, I'm pretty sure that's what she said. Yep, she's a freshman and she's beating the seniors.
She's going to be dangerous by high, by her senior year.
Yeah. So I appreciate this conversation. We had great conversations tonight. Um. And I'm glad to hear, Kevin, you're, you don't plan on fading away, that you plan on getting back up to that podium. Um, would a regular commentary? Would you be willing to do regular commentary? Maybe update us every now and then with Jen on current events at the school board?
Well, I'm, I'm not without the ability to talk. And and I've become pretty good friends with a couple of people, Jennifer and others who are intricately involved. And so we we communicate. Pretty much daily about what's going on. Um, so uh, so we do, we do have a lot of interest. The real question is how much? You know, how much real impact can you have other than just to let, you know, let the world have an avenue of knowing what's going on and and a different perspective? I mean, I've always amazed, I. I lived on the island for ten years and I thought. Intelligent people read the Six Three Magazine and they say, well. This writer says that, so I'm going to do the opposite of what that person says. Because that person's just dead wrong on everything. And I it came as a surprise that. People don't necessarily see it that way. They there are people who who live and die by what what he says.
Yeah.
And and the other, the other news outlets in town will will go along with them. So you don't, you you basically have propaganda.
Well, now we've got the Sunshine Journal.
Right.
He puts out a lot of truth.
Don't, don't even get us going on media in this town. You thank God for Thomas. I wish Thomas. Could get uh. Five hundred subscribers for Substack right now because we could benefit from having a full-time. Sunshine Journal in publication in this town because there's no accountability when it comes to that either. I mean, you take away West Palm Media or Orlando Media, but you talk about media in this town. Um, what is there? I mean, Vero News or what do they call themselves, three, two, nine, six, three? And it, that's just cherry picking. And it's uh, to me, it's, most of them are attack articles, depending on the author of the article. I mean, obviously, you can tell. Right off the bat.
Well, that's and remember, like, you know, and I always said this before, in all the years of living here and doing PR and marketing. That we don't have, like, West Palm Beach doesn't cover what we do up here. We don't get that. We don't get coverage. From local TV. We don't get, that's why we started this. This is why your new reconnections came came about is because of that reason. Because this is the news here in town. So if people want to tune in to find out what's going at the school board, they're not going to get it from the West Palm Beach new uh ra- uh TV stations or new or radio. They're going to get it right here, what we're doing right here, right now. And so you're absolutely right, Mike. That's the whole point is to do this. And to have these forums. And I'm I'm so glad that Kevin's involved and that we can do this because if we can come up with a situation where, like you said. You know, Sunshine Journal has a show or can be a guest on something. or can be a guest on something of these segments and start building these segments like this, we're going to be able to reach that and counter that narrative. Because obviously we don't have the money to do it. And that's why I think that they always counter what we try to do because they do have that platform. Like it's basically the Washington Post in Vero Beach. So we're fighting the Washington Post of Vero Beach to try to counter the narrative. But every time that we do something, they use that machine on the beach, 32963, to counter what we're doing because they have the money to do it. And that's the, I mean, look what they did with Barefoot. I mean, they did that exact same thing with him. When he resigned, boom, right away. Here comes, here comes the articles, here comes the, you know, here's Brian Barefoot and his wildly successful career. And how could they do this to him? How's it, you know, the Santas can't reinstate him? He only, he made a little mistake. But then we, we can't counter that. But now we can. And this is what we're going to do. This is how we're going to counter it. It's the only way.
Yeah, because even, yeah, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry to cut you off, but that's why I'm hopeful, e- even if it's not us. But if somebody could get citizens like Kevin that are involved or have been involved, that are still going to pay attention, give us their thoughts and, because a lot of, I know a lot of the people who follow me on my channels, they're not watching the school board meeting. They, they'll catch maybe a 32963 article. And, and I include Jen because, I mean, she's a member of Moms for Liberty and they are school board watchdogs. Like they don't, like you can't get nothing past Jennifer Pippin. And hopefully I, I, I love Jennifer's participation and she's always willing to give us her two cents. And I'd love it if, even if it was with Joanne or one of us that we get your guys' thought, maybe once a month at the least, after the, you know, workshop or a meeting, you know?
That's going to be interesting because there's always something to talk about after, after the meeting's held. And it isn't about it. The problem is the, the meetings are very long. There's very, the, the meat is very limited. Um, there's some, a few good intelligent people who come up and speak to some key things. And then you have a couple of points that can be summarized in a couple of minutes of what actually happens. But, uh, but in, in, it's long and drawn out and confusing and people really don't know. So they, and it doesn't really affect them. Doesn't, doesn't come to them in a, as a bill or a, a check the next day. So they just, they let it go. But it's, it's a lot of money, 400,000, 400 million dollars is a lot of money for us to be spending. And unfortunately, you know, we're getting better, but you know, we're, we're, we're what, we're number, what, seven in the, in the state? Our, our scores are still in the mid sixties.
It's terrible. That's a D.
It should be a D or it should be an F.
You know, you look at our, our scores and then you see those videos that are out there of the Chinese people and how they train their kids. And you're like, man, our kids look like just babies, like they're in, when they're like 10 years old. And these kids are like sharp and they just know how to teach.
And they are not only educated, they're not, they're not only not educated, they are not raised up in a strong culture of hard work and productivity and personal responsibility and growth and all the, the, the background things that make that education useful. So they're, they're uneducated and they don't even care about being educated. Uh, and it's not their fault because the framework that caused us as children to get to that point is not natural. And unfortunately with many of the kids our age and, and our, our children are not raising their children up with the kind of framework that they need to have the right character.
That's true. That's true. A lot of parents want to be friends with their kids and they don't realize that you're not your kid's friend.
No, doesn't play out right at the end.
Yeah.
Well, Joanne, you, I mean, you did a good job breaking down the lot that, you know, I watched your other video that you did about breaking down what, you know, the, the, the dire situation in the back and forth. And I think we need more of that too, for you to be, you know, keep doing that. And then like Kevin said, you know, he, he's going to be involved, maybe like you said, once a month, we decide to, you know, do some kind of an after school board show, you know, you know?
Yeah, that would be formative because you know, we're beating, we're, we're battling 32963, you know, they're going to throw it out there. And that's all they're going to read.
Yeah. And you have to, you have to have something to counter that, you know? So and, and I think that this is, and that's, and it, and it, like they, uh, Kevin said, is that you can't, you know, people don't want to watch the whole, the whole show, the whole, the whole school board meeting. But let's, let's do a, a counter narrative and nothing in a negative way, just to point out the obvious. What is, what you see, like you did with Dyer, like what you see going on right here is this. And this is what's going on here. Just a straight up, middle of the road, non-biased. This is what you're watching. This is what's going on at the meetings. And if you come, you'll see it. If you don't, we'll break it down for you.
Right.
Actually, it'd be useful to, to capture some appropriate screenshots
Yes.
or clips and, you know, put them up so people, they can get their one or two minutes, maybe with a little bit of explanation.
Yes.
Then they can actually see and understand what's going on and walk away in a few minutes with a, a, an understanding of a key piece of what transpires.
Yeah, because it's what it comes down to. If somebody watches or somebody reads a 32963 article about the school board meeting and then they go and watch what we're talking about, they can make their own decision on what's really going on. What really is the truth and discern for themselves. Like, well, you know, you know, and Joanne breaking it down this way and 32963 is writing it this way. Well, what's the truth? Like what's really going on at these meetings? And the proof is in the pudding. That's the beauty of these meetings being recorded. And you can pull the clips and you can just show the receipts because that's what POSCA is doing. He's, he's planning receipts for down the road. He's showing you what's going on. He's going to point out the ignorance. He's going to point out the delusion. And he'll be able to go back a six months from now and go, well, see, this is what he said six months ago. And this is what he's doing now. And that's what I think would make the most sense for this format.
Yep. And it's showing that he's not there for unity, you know?
Are you, have you had, uh, uh, Gene on your show?
No, we haven't. No.
He, he's, he's a sharp guy.
He is.
He is very sharp.
He's there for a reason, believe me. God placed him there for a reason, to question everything that they're doing so that he points it out. And he's creating receipts. That's the beauty of it. He's creating the receipts. He's pushing you, pushing them into a corner and making him have to defend himself. And he's not going to be good at defending himself. And those receipts are going to come back to bite him in the butt.
And those are the things that we can publicize and, and make people sort of somewhat aware of them. If, if they can, if they're shareable, if enough people, see, the, the good thing about Sunshine Journal is he's 700, 1,000 viewers read his article. But you know that the writers from the other news media are reading it a lot more than the relative small number of readers. It gets under their skin like a bad insect.
Good.
Because there's subscribers too.
Right. And because they, you know, they hate to hear bad things about themselves. I mean, it's just, they, they know that not, that their, their people won't see it, but it bugs them that it's said.
And they refuse to admit when they're wrong.
Well, yeah, because they're never wrong.
Exactly. So that's the counter that we have to do is to counter it and show that like, wait a minute, you know, he's, he's not being authentic. He's not being, you know, because what they're doing is they're, they're, they're taking things personal and they're making assumptions is what they're doing. So that people see that, people can discern for themselves and decide, wait a minute, this Dyer guy's taking things personal. Like, why is he taking it personally? He's supposed to be up there for the children and for the community. But he, he, everything's important to him. Like, uh, this, this vote that I didn't get is very important to me. And this mission for the, the, the Learning Alliance is very important to me. And that, and that's what people have to start to see. Because the, the, the 32963 is not going to, they're going to express it that way. They're going to express it in the complete opposite way.
Right.
Yeah. And then even when they mentioned the previous board member that was on, on that work group for two years, they didn't mention Peggy's name, but it was Peggy that was on there for two years. And she's the one that said she voted against the resolution. And I'm like, what a hypocrite. And then she said, nobody knew that she had that position for two years when she stated that. I don't think this is how a board member should be elected into that position. I'm like, what do you, how did you end up doing it for two years?
Well, also she, at the previous meeting, she said, she opined that she thought everybody, it's, it's a, it's a good opportunity. Everyone should have a chance to serve on that committee. So I don't know why she said that. But, you know, one more, she seemed to be supporting the idea of Johnny, of, of Jackie being on that, but then undermining it at the same time. So I mean, as scripture says, hypocrisy is about the worst sin because you convict yourself with your own mouth.
There you go. You hit it right on the head, Kevin. And that's exactly what's going to happen. That's exactly what I witnessed when I was watching the Dyer, the first meeting and the first workshop. I was like, they're, they're going to, they're going to say things and then it's going to come back around. Because what goes on in the dark is coming to the light and nothing can hide now. So these tactics don't work anymore. They think it worked, but they don't anymore. That's the beauty of it.
And, and the thing about that workshop is he kept confusing the 2023, is that what it was? The 2023 with the workshop? And she's like, stop confusing the two. They're two different things, you know? And, and I loved her speech on governance and that's how I left it. I was like, I'm going to leave it right there. Yeah. So I want to thank everybody for coming on today. This was great talk. We're going to have to get with Jennifer and Kevin. We'll have to talk about getting you guys on, you and Jennifer on once a month to do the update. We'll call it the School Board Rundown.
Well, you know, interesting thing is because, uh, 63 has a, I think it's a Saturday, Saturday night deadline for their articles. Um, so Monday morning boards, um, meetings, he can't write about that for another week.
Exactly. Boom.
So after that meeting, that leaves an open, opening for several days to gather information. And I, I say, you not only say this would happen, but you can have a little feature of, so what do you think 63 is going to say about this?
I love it. I love
Oh, yeah.
Going to say this. You preempt what he's going to say. And sort of parody his, parody his, his article, it'll make him crazy. And then when he comes out and pretty much says the same
I like it.
I love it.
What we can do is like you said, Kevin, that's perfect. And then if somehow we can coordinate it with the Sunshine Journal for him to do the same thing. So we have the print coming out or the digital coming out. And then we have the show come out at the same time, that we preempting the piece is going to come out that following Tuesday. It makes sense.
I know Sunshine is accepting, uh, uh, contributions. So if there's people who want, who have thoughts and ideas, they want to contribute in writing, I think that would help broaden, um, Sunshine Journal's, um, uh, reach and product and, and get more people interested if they see more different things.
I love it.
Because he can't, he can only write a couple of articles a week.
Exactly. Yeah. That's beautiful though. We can coordinate that with, with Thomas. To coordinate the show, the school board recap with the, with the, with, with the Sunshine Journal, school board recap or whatever he wants to call it, that week, that week, whenever it happens. That's, I think that's, that is a phenomenal idea.
Like a meet the press kind of deal, but it's more like, uh, understand what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
And he can be a part of, uh, those types of shows with commentary. Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And then have Thomas come on and do a show or whatever, talk about his article. Because that's what Bill Cooper used to do back in the day. He would, he would take pieces from his book and he would do a show about it to counter the narrative. So I mean, it makes total sense. And then, uh, you know, and this is why
Nobody else is doing it.
Exactly.
Five hours of a school board meeting or you read the comments for somebody to say, hey, at 4426 is when, uh, you know, Dyer is talking about being drowsy at noon, you know, it's like, like, need that timestamp too.
Like you said, Mike, I mean, that's what I spend my time doing is like when I'm driving or I'm doing what I'm doing for work, I'm listening to Jen, to, to Joanne's show and when her breaking down the Dyer scenario. I'm listening to the school board meeting from the, from Monday night. So I'm educating myself on it so I can come on here and speak, you know, with a, with a fairly decent knowledge of what's going on. So we're going to take that knowledge and put it to use for the rest of the community to be able to dissect it for themselves and count, counter the narrative. I love it. That's beautiful. I love it.
I've got another show to brand.
Yeah, another show to brand. Well, that's all that's going on here. That's what we wanted to, to start. So now we got the school board recap with Kevin and Kevin and Jennifer. Then we'll have the Sunshine Journal net counter the narrative show and then we'll just keep building it. That's it.
Yeah. Now we have to expose Sunshine Journal with our truths.
Yeah. That's it. Yeah. I love it. That's awesome, guys. Yeah, that's
I'm a, I appreciate, um, our guest tonight. Um, definitely appreciate you, Kevin, and everything you're doing, um, and staying involved. Um, thanks for coming on.
Thanks.
Look forward to talking some more, definitely.
Thanks for the chance to chat. It's been fun. We'll have to do it again.
Yeah, for sure.
Count on it.
And I think that's a beautiful thing, what you've done, being on the board already. And then you're going to bring this to the, you're going to be like a correspondent for, for the school board now. You, you've been on the other side of the velvet rope. So now you're going to come over here with us now. So now you're going to be a correspondent.
Not, not that I'm not on that side of the dais. I can say things that, that a priori would not really allow me to say.
That's right.
You, you can speak a little more, uh, more frankly when you, you know, when you're not part of that group.
And that's what happened to me when they got, when Barefoot had me fired and they both wrote the article. I was like, oh crap, I guess I'll start a podcast now because I'll be able to say whatever I want to say now. Again, nobody's going to be able to do anything about it. So tired. You, you, you just got outmanipulated with the stupid frigging mail-in ballots. That's it. Because you should have won and you did win, but they just, they, they use their counter narrative. They use the mail-in ballots and they use it against you. That's all.
Republicans have to learn and I think unfortunately the amendment didn't pass. But, um, we got, we have to push the school board election into a general election because that's when Republicans are home and show up.
Yeah. And let's focus on that too.
Democrats voting in primary.
Yeah.
Right.
We can change that. We have the power to change that too. So, you know, we'll do it.
So before we close out, guys, I wanted to do a well-deserved shout out and say congratulations to Moms for Liberty co-founder Tiffany Justice for making the shortlist to be the Secretary of Education. Because nobody, I, I haven't heard anybody in Indian River County give her those accolades. She has worked hard. She has busted her butt. She has fought for families, for community, for the kids. And if, if you see this Tiffany, we love you and
Come on my show.
Yeah.
I emailed their media department, but I kind of got ghosted, but it was
When you post this, Chris goes post it, tag her on this on, on Twitter, you know?
Yeah. And also thank you for Jennifer Pippin. We love you, Jennifer. Sorry you couldn't join us today, but we'll catch up with you later.
There you go.
All right, guys, we're closing out with Binford Chronicles. Thank you everyone for joining me. This was great. I really enjoyed it.
Thanks, guys.
So everybody share it with like-minded friends. Remember Binford Chronicles.